...to order at 7:01. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our next item is Presentations of Awards and Foco Nations, of which we have none. So we will move into public participation on any matter related to board responsibilities. Our phone is open at 860-665-8736. Seeing no members of our public and our phone line is not lighting up. We will move on to our consent agenda. I ask Dr. Braverman to read the consent agenda.
Approval of minutes of December 13th, 2017. Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Guyan. Anyone have any objections to the consent agenda? Seeing none, the consent agenda is approved. We have no old business and we'll move into new business. Standing Committee Information Items. There was an Executive Finance Committee meeting on December 11th. And just get to that. Part of that meeting was... Part of that meeting was to discuss the superintendent's budget. He shared with us some of his preliminary ideas for it, how he would present it. So obviously we'll hear more about that this evening. We also had a discussion in action regarding adjusting our administrative salary ranges, which we did adjust at our board meeting a few nights after that. So we've already discussed that in our meeting. Any questions on the Executive Finance Committee meeting? I think a lot of us were at that. We also had two curriculum committee meetings, as well as one tonight on December 13th and January 10th. Mrs. Guyan, if you'd like to say a few words about those.
Our first meeting on January 10th, I'm going to say. We spent a lot of time with a number of people from the district talking about the need in the middle school level for social worker and school psychologist. We just had a lengthy discussion about what our current needs are, how our students' needs are being met, how things have changed in the last several years, and how we're going to try to accommodate our students. It was the first of a couple of conversations, so I think it was a great start. And then we just finished a meeting half an hour ago. We talked about the high school program of studies and the way that our courses are currently weighted and looking at different ways of doing things in the future.
Any questions on the curriculum meetings that have happened? Okay. Seeing none. I don't believe our student reps are available this evening.
Available. They have exams.
So they have exams, so they are home studying. So we'll likely hear from them in our next meeting. And with that, we'll move on to Item 1 under New Business, which is our presentation of the Superintendent of Schools 2018-2019 Budget to the Board of Education. I'll just say a couple of quick things before we get into that presentation. First, I'd like to recognize that we do have more than half of our town council on attendance tonight, which we all greatly appreciate. This is a good first opportunity for all of you to hear Dr. Collins' presentation to us. We have been in discussion already with the town manager and some town councilors about, you know, expectations, where things are going. So we've started that collaborative process, which is always a good thing for our town. I'd also like to recognize that we have many of our building administrators here this evening, as well as some central office staff, which we appreciate all of their work in helping Dr. Collins on his presentation. I know he's worked hard on it. He's tried to put in what he thinks is necessary and what he thinks will move our district forward. So I want everyone to keep that in mind. This is his starting point, and it's his presentation to us. The procedure is that we will then do anything we want to his budget, change it, additions, subtractions. We have two meetings next week to go over program by program what's in the budget to have any questions that we have answered. And then we have several follow-up meetings after that to discuss anything we'd like to do to the budget before we adopt it as our own and then transmit it over to the town council for their consideration. So with that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Collins, and we will get on with the presentation.
Thank you very much. Welcome, everyone. So tonight, and I do apologize if it says 20 minutes in the presentation, unfortunately it might take a little bit longer, so I apologize for that. Some housekeeping before we begin. We are educators. If nothing else, we love our acronyms. And so I just want to kind of go over a couple of those, so people are familiar with what those are, just in case you hear those terms. They will be used in the presentation. I'm not going to go over all of them, but some of the ones that are used. You're going to hear BCBA, which is Board Certified Behavior Analyst. You're going to hear CIP, Capital Improvement Program. You're going to hear EL or ELL, which is English Language Learners. You're going to hear FTE, which represents Full-Time Equivalent, it's a number of staff. The HBF or HBA is the Health Benefit Account. IDEA is Individuals with Disabilities Act, it's a federal act. Language Arts LA. NTA is New Teachers Association. OPEB, Other Post-Employment Benefits. OTPT, you're going to hear, that is Occupational Therapists, Physical Therapists. PLAN is the system we use to vet new programs for implementation in the budget. Section 04 is a part of the Rehabilitation Act of 1973, which is very similar to Special Ed. So we qualify 504 and Special Ed in kind of the same category. They have very similar requirements. STEM, I think we all know, Science, Technology, Engineering, Math. And SWOT is our SWOT analysis, where we examine our strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats over the last 12 months and over the coming 18. So typically, when we do the budget, we look at contractual obligations. What are those things that we need to have to meet the contracts that both the board and the town negotiate? And so those have to be included. Any employee benefits, including OPEB, state and federal mandates that come down, and any fixed costs that we have, tuition, utilities, transportation, and all of those types of things that are more fixed. Those have to be included into the budget. So this year was a little bit of an unusual start, because we weren't really sure where to start, and so we kind of had to do it a couple of different ways. So there's a little few answers we're going to need to see, and it all depends on those answers. The budget's starting point, the health benefit contribution, which we know we will get on February 1st. Unfortunately, I don't have it right now, so I couldn't take that off. So that number is going to be in there, and will likely change on February 1st. The operating expenses that are currently funded, are scheduled to be funded through the town's capital budget. And then the availability of any health benefit in the current year to reduce any operation expenses in the next. So those things are kind of up in the air, and we're going to need to figure out those answers. So our starting point, as I shared with you, we weren't really sure what to use as a starting point. The allocated resources that we have, our current group budget is $70,389,647. There were $1.2 million or so used from the contingency fund to fund current year operating expenses, both for salaries and for special education costs. So if we added those, the actual operating resources that we had available to us were $71,606,501. So it really is going to depend on that. So I tried to do it both ways. I didn't want to make any assumptions. So here is the difference. We have currently used that amount of the reserve account, which leaves us a balance of $5 in the reserve account. That has been spent on salaries and requires Special Ed costs. So there's only $5 left in that account. So my range could be, depending on how we select, anywhere from a 2.99% to 8.21% range. So I'll share with you in a few minutes just where we are. So below that 2.99%, really the district could not function below that. 8.21% is reasonable. The actual staff request were 13.79%. Obviously, I was not going to present to you a 13.79% increase. And I tried to get even below the midpoint. So there are things that we know and things that we don't know. As I shared with you, we have to look out over the next 18 months over what's going to happen to be prepared for that, because when somebody moves into our district, we can't, and they require services, it's not something that we can avoid. So what is unknown is what families will move into town over the next 18 months that require services beyond what a typical student would need. Which new laws and mandates will be implemented by the General Assembly? As I think I've shared with you in the past, there was legislation that was passed for expelled students came, I don't want to say out of clearly described, it came at the last moment, well after the budget, you know, and something that could not be expected. And that, to the tune, could cost us $400,000. So those things come up, unfortunately, and those are unknown. What is known is that we do have a constitutional right, or students do have constitutional right to public education, and that we are required to implement that. And that we are driven by a clear mission and a focused strategic plan to try to do things as efficiently as we possibly can in the district. So those are the new ones and unknowns. There are 1,000 variables that we really try to hone in to make sure that we're doing things as efficiently as possible. I've shared with you, I have to say at least 1,000 times, that we're a mission-driven school district, and understanding why we exist is very important to achieving that. We do strategic planning every year, which includes a SWOT analysis, so we examine all of those things. We identify the key factors, and then we put together, using all of that information, the financial information that I'm going to be presenting to you tonight. Our mission, you will see it up in every school building, and that's what it is right there. That is the why we exist and how we're going to hopefully prepare every student for college, career, and citizenship. Now, this gets confused sometimes as taking it to mean that I want every student to go to college, so that is not my intent in any way, shape, or form. However, I do want every student to be prepared to go to college, should they choose to, the day before graduation. So we want to make sure that as they walk across the stage, that they are not only prepared to be able to go to college if they choose, but they also are prepared for a career pathway, or have some idea and some skills to be able to go out into that area too. The skills have merged in those two areas, so it's very, very important that they have those. Long gone are the days where you can graduate high school and go out and get a job that is well-paying. You need those skills, so we're trying to provide all of that. And citizenship, I think, is one of those things that is very, very important. We want to make sure we're putting out students who are well-informed and who can participate in a global economy. So those things are very, very important. As I shared with you, there's our SWOT analysis that is done every year. We have been doing it for 18 years now. And so we involve all members of the community to bring them in, to find out how the community feels about things, the internal factors, the external factors, all of those things are put together and considered in the budget. The areas of focus, we've identified five areas, and we try to make sure that everything we do revolves around one of these five focus areas. Otherwise, it's not moving us closer to our mission. Student growth and performance is number one. Organizational efficiency, adaptability, and effectiveness is number two. School districts have been in operation and have had the same game plan, if you will, for over 100 years. And if we are still doing things the same way that they were doing things 100 years, and in many cases we are, that's very, very inefficient. But how do you move that aircraft carrier quickly when in such a large organization and there are so many external factors that are going on? The American Public Education System was built very well. However, it's very hard to change that, so you try to as quickly and efficiently as you possibly can. Making sure that we are providing a safe, supportive, and healthy culture. It does not just speak to the security of the buildings, but it speaks to making sure that our students are supported, our adults are supported, and that we are providing a healthy culture and healthy meals and all of those kinds of things. Well, there's infrastructure and facilities that support 21st century learning. Those are items that have to be planned out well in advance. If we need to have adjustments done to a building to make sure that we're providing 21st century learning, that is something that takes a long time and has to be planned out. And then family and community engagement. Are we investing our families? Are we informing our families? Are we bringing them in? Are we helping them? Are we bringing them as part of the community? So those five focus areas are what everything that we do should be revolved around. Every two years after the election, the board, the new board, gets together and they decide with a clean sheet of paper, for the most part, what are your priorities going to be over the next two years? And the board has identified these priorities as important to them. Improving student achievement, ensuring all students are college commended citizenship ready. Optimizing the integration of technology into instruction. Increasing access to early childhood education. Providing infrastructure and facilities optimal for learning. Provide a safe, supportive, and healthy culture. Increase opportunities for extended and enhanced learning. Increase the number of students who are proficient in two or more languages. Attract, develop, support, and retain professional talent. Recognize the ability of the community to support education. And finally, and I know many board members wanted to include this in smaller print, address state and federal initiatives or mandates. And nonetheless, it has to be done. So those are the priorities of the board. So all of those things we put together. We have our plans process, which as I shared with you, is a process we use to vet any new proposals. It has to be tied directly back to our mission and our strategic plan. And all of those things go together in the preparation of the budget. Timeline and the process is inclusive. It starts right in our classrooms. All of our teachers have the opportunities to put in what they need for their classrooms. So we involve our teachers, we involve our principals, we involve... It's a very inclusive process that we start off with. It begins in the classroom in September, I said, shared with you, and then it's reviewed by principals and supervisors, and goes all the way through. And then in December, I'm presented with the final outcome, and then I put together the budget for January. And so here we are. Typically, we present by program. That is how we've done it over the years. We are going to be presenting tonight sort of a blend, but we're going to be... There's been a lot of requests for by school, so what does it cost by school? So we've broken it down both ways. And in the end, it really doesn't make any difference, because that is the budget. So by school or by program, regardless, that is who our audience is, that is who we need to prepare for. Generation Alpha. So understanding the needs of our students is paramount to putting a program together. If you are a baby boomer, and there probably aren't many of us left, right, but if you are a millennial, you have to understand that the student who we have in our classroom right now is very different. They have very different desires, very different needs, and very different learning styles. So when we hear about how when I was in school and all of that kind of thing, it's appreciated. However, we have to also understand that the next generation, those students who are entering our schools right now, Generation Alpha, are even more different, right? You have to remember that many, all the students in our schools, they don't even have an understanding of 9/11. So they weren't born. Many of us can recall at 9 o'clock on that fateful Tuesday morning exactly what we were doing, where we were. These kids have no knowledge of that, except history, right? You have to kind of understand that. Generation Z, they are now entering in the workforce, so they will be working for us. So I'll get to that in just a sec. But I wanted to take us just back historically for that reason, because if you look back, I went back to around 1978, at who our district and what our district looked like and what the needs were in our district in 1978. At that time, we had 1.6% population of special education students. We had no 504 students. We had no medically fragile students. We had less than 1% ELL or EL. I couldn't get the data on free and reduced lunch. We had 25 open choice kids and no magnet school students. 10 years later, in 1988, our Special Ed population rose to 2.7%. Still had no 504, no medically fragile, still less than 1% EL, 5% free and reduced, which is likely what it was in 1978, but I didn't want to guess, and 25 open choice students and no magnet school students. 1998, the Special Ed population actually dropped to less than 1%. No 504, no medically fragile, less than 1% EL, 8% free and reduced, 25 choice students, and eight magnet school students. And those eight were approved by the board as half-day students, that they went to either Gamas or Ga. 2008, that's when the legislation for magnet school changes. And at that time, we had risen our Special Ed population up to 11%. We had 1% 504, 3% medically fragile. By medically fragile, we're talking about students with diabetes, we're talking about students with feeding tubes, and all of those things, they are considered medically fragile. We had a 3% EL population at the time, 13% free and reduced lunch, 53 open choice students, and now 27 magnet school students. 10 years later, which is where we are right now, the Special Ed population has risen to 14.5%. Our 504 population is at 4%. Our medically fragile has risen to 5%. ELL has risen to 6%. That's doubled in 10 years. 21% free and reduced lunch, and we have 100 open choice students, and we are responsible for 191 magnet school students. So I wanted to give you that kind of overview over time of the changing district. And there's nothing good or bad about it. It's a matter of providing the needs for those students. That's what we're here and all about. So breaking it down by school. People often look at the school building and determine the size of the school building by what the needs are. When you really have to look at the population inside the school is what's really important. At Elizabeth Green Elementary School, there are 12% EL, 21% Special Ed or 504 students, 7% open choice, 32% economically disadvantaged, or a total of, and these are not duplicated, 51% of the students at Elizabeth Green Elementary School are considered at-risk. 51%. At Anna Reynolds, 12% EL, 16% Special Ed 504, no open choice students, 22% economically disadvantaged, or an at-risk total of 39%. Ruth Chaffee Elementary, 13% EL, 16% Special Ed 504, 2% open choice, 22 economically disadvantaged, for a total of 45% at-risk. John Patterson Elementary School, 13% EL, 19% Special Ed 504, 4% open choice, 21% disadvantaged, and for a total of 45%. Get to the middle level, we have 2% EL at Martin Kellogg, 16% Special Ed 504, 1% open choice, 24% economically disadvantaged, 36 total at-risk percentage. John Wallace, 2%, 15% Special Ed 504, 3% open choice, 18% economically disadvantaged, 31 at-risk. And Newington High School, 1% EL, 19% Special Ed 504, 1% open choice, 19% disadvantaged, for a total of 33% at-risk. And this will be very important as we start to get into each school, and when we've broken down the staffing in each school, you'll start to see where some of the needs and some of the staffing decisions are made because of that. So we'll put that in there. Our outer district, these are still our students. We have special education outplacements. There are 25 students that we have outplaced, and one of those is open choice. So there are a total of 92% of them are at-risk. There are special needs, obviously. They have significant needs that we are not able to accommodate in the district. There are 29 students who are attending magnet schools that are special education that we are still responsible for. And then, so the total outplacement, this is the number each month when I present, this is the number I always tell you to keep an eye on. It's 54 is the number of outplaced students for special education. The magnets, we have 73 students today at Krec. We have five at Learn, 90 at Hartford Magnets, three at Other, for a total of 171. And I put the little asterisk there, because the number that is important is the October 1st enrollment, and at the time, we had 191 students at the magnet schools. So 191 is the number you have to pay for. So although we're down to 171, we're down actually a little further today, you're still going to have to pay 191 for 191 of those students. Those are still our students. We tried to compare a little bit other school districts, see where we are with Special Ed. Are we on the high side? Are we on the low side? Where are we? And the most consistent data I could get was 2015-16. I wanted to see where we were. So in 2015-16, we had 12.2% Special Ed population, and now, as I said, we have 14.5. But we had a higher population. If you look at what we're paying for percentage of our budget, we're fairly efficient, in my opinion, with some of the programs that we have put together to keep our kids in-house. We are not shorting our special education students by any means. We're providing excellent programming for them. But we appear to be doing it cost-efficiently. So we continue to try to look for ways to do that and improve cost efficiency. Magnet school enrollment, the preschool choices obviously are there. Here is the magnet school trajectory, if you will. That's where we were back in 2003-4. And if you look, when the legislation passed in 2008, when the spike hit, and we were on our way down, and we seemed to have risen a little bit, like I said, that number, 191, has come down to 171, but unfortunately, you're still going to have to pay for the 191. Oh, there we were. So in the start of the school year, sorry, there were 202 students. October 1st, 191, we're down to 171. So that number does come down. This is just, I have not asked for any additional funding, but I just wanted to give you some idea of what the costs were. So we should be fine this year. Here again, these are estimates. So we're just a little bit over, it seems, but we haven't gotten final numbers in. We'll see how that goes. The problem may come in the future if the preschool students stay. That's where it starts to be a little bit problematic, because now you see the numbers really starting to go out of whack just a little bit. But like I said, we'll cross that bridge when we get to it. We have not asked for any additional funding for that. So here is a grand summary, if you will, of all of the students who we are responsible for, and the grand total is 4,338 students. And that just kind of breaks it down to show you. 227 of them are ELL students or EL students, 778 are either Special Ed 504, 87 open choice, and then 883 what the state considers economically disadvantaged. Okay? So 1,624 at-risk students who are 37%, and that is non-duplicated. So how do we provide for the needs of our students? Well, half of the battle is finding out, and how do we provide for the needs of our staff? For the first time, we will have five generations, if you will, of employees who are working with our students. So what motivates the traditionalists? What motivates the baby boomers, the Gen X, the millennials, and Gen Z? So dealing with all of those and providing for the needs for all of our employees who work with our students is key to understanding what makes them tick and providing what their needs are, since they are the ones working directly with our students. And as I shared with you, about 80% of our budget is devoted to people. So it behooves us to really make sure that we are providing the best possible... So it behooves us to really make sure that we are providing the best possible professional learning and all of that for our people. So we'll get into who those people are. Because this question comes up every year, and I wanted to make sure that I provided you with some frame of reference, so when we talk about the 111 and 112 over the next couple of weeks, you understand who those people are. So they're basically divided into two categories. We have certified and non-certified. Those two classifications affectionately known as 111 and 112, right? The teachers, administrators would go under 112, and then that group, and I'm going to go over who those are right now. FTE, as I shared with you, is full-time equivalent. BT would be part-time, and then we have hourly. So those three types of people work for us. We'll start with the certified. And under teachers, it could be general classroom teachers. Those could be usually your elementary. And then programs. You have art teachers. We also have art teachers who work at the elementary level, education technology teachers, language arts or English. It's very easy to do if you are a full-time English teacher at Newington High School, you know, right square where you are. But an elementary teacher will teach multiple content areas. And so you have to make sure you're trying to figure out how much money you're spending on math and science and so on. So those are all the certified people. We have administrators that are broken out. We have building principals, assistant principals, department coordinators, and centralized administrators. Our department coordinators in many districts are not considered administrators. In our district, they are. They have administrative roles, and so they are considered administrators in our district. Centralized administrators can be misleading sometimes, and it's not just that everybody sits here at town hall. When we centralize administration, they are designed so that they can work in multiple schools. For instance, we have a person who, for special education, who manages four elementary schools. So she will, instead of being in one location, she is considered centralized. However, she handles four different schools. The 112. This is an area that is often confused, so I wanted to go over that a little bit. The classified staff. We're talking about our nurses. We're talking about our BCBA's, our Board Certified Behavior Analysts, the occupational physical therapists, the assistant athletic director, IT folks, all of those positions there. ASME is our local 2930, our clerical workers, our county clerks, our bus drivers, our union bus drivers, our maintenance folks. We have tutors, academic tutors, special ed tutors. We have, under Other, this is kind of where everybody else goes, our CCSU interns, our Transition Academy job coaches, all of those positions that you see there, adult education, cafeteria aides, security officers, residency investigators, lab monitors. All of those people are not FTE, so they're not full-time equivalent. You won't see them as a position. But that's where they go. So we'll go over now by school. We'll go over the costs for staffing and number of staff by school. Go to Elizabeth Green first, and yes, that is her above. Teachers. So under teachers, we have 30.55. Now, how do you get .55 of a teacher? Right? So in that case, it is either a part-time person or somebody who is split between two schools, and that is the fractional cost of that person assigned to that building. Administrators, 1.25. Classified staff, 1.25, and that is the cost for that. ASME, we have five people, and that is the cost for that. And then we have hourly, the tutors who work with our special needs students and others. They are hourly employees, but that is the money we have set aside for them. And then hourly, other staff, as I shared with you who they were, and that's the amount. So the total amount for Elizabeth Green School is that amount that you see on the bottom. And there are a total of 38.05 FTE at Elizabeth Green School. And you compare that to the right side, and our enrollment is 297 students. But as I think I shared with you, you can't look at it as a school of 297. You have to look at who is in that building and what are the needs of those students in that building. Now, the area that I have highlighted, I went back to the enrollment projections. And what typically NESDEC does is they take whatever was currently, and they just roll it up. So I went back two years to look at what they predicted, or who they predicted was going to be at Elizabeth Green School, because that's the number we used to plan. And so we are 15 more than was projected at Elizabeth Green. And as I've shared with you, I've shared all those other numbers. But what I thought was very important, because some of these students, as I shared with you, the data that is up here is not duplicated. So we're talking about just the number of students. But when you talk about students with multiple need and the need of the school, because if those students have multiple needs, they're going to need different services. Does that make sense? So if you actually calculate the need, at Elizabeth Green School, it's 71% at Elizabeth Green School. So that school needs resources to meet the needs of the students in that school. If we go to Anna Reynolds, there is the FTE over there. We have 37.25 teachers, 1.25 administrators, 1.25 classified, 5.5 ASME. And then our hourly, there's the allotment for our hourly folks. So we have a total number of FTE at Anna Reynolds Elementary School of 45.25. Now, the enrollment, they were almost spot-on, off by, you know, we just have two more than were projected. And their total at-risk population, as I shared with you, non-duplicated, is 39%. When you add in the others, it is now 51%. So that is the actual need at Anna Reynolds Elementary School. And then, yes, that is Anna Reynolds on top. Ruth El Chaffee School, we have 30.65 teachers, 1.25 administrators, 1.25 classified, five ASME employees, and there's our allotment for hourly, very similar to the others, for a total of 38.15 FTE at Ruth El Chaffee Elementary School. They were way off on this one, so we have 56 more students than projected at Ruth Chaffee. And 44% at-risk, or a grand total of 54%. So still more than half. And that is Ruth Chaffee at the top. John Patterson Elementary School, 34.3, 1.25 administrators, 1.25 classified, 5.5 ASME. There's the allotment for hourly. It is a larger amount for tutors, because we have a specialized program at John Patterson. So here again, you have to look at who's in the building and what are the needs are. Total of 42.3 FTE. The enrollment, there were 31 more than projected, and 45% at-risk, or grand total of 58% need. And yes, that is John Patterson at the top. Martin Kellogg Middle School, obviously is a little bit bigger. 55.95 teachers, 3.25 administrators, 2.25 classified staff, 6.5 ASME. The amount for tutors and other support staff is there. Obviously, it's going to be a little bit more. We have more students. 67.95 FTE at Martin Kellogg Middle School. There are 37 students above projected enrollment. And the need at that school, 44%. I couldn't find a picture of Martin Kellogg. John Wallace, 55.5 teachers, 3.25 administrators, 2.25 classified, 6.5 ASME, and there's our allotment for hourly, for a total of 67.5 FTE at John Wallace. They were only five off in enrollment with regard to their projection, and the need is 37%. So pretty good there. And yes, that is John Wallace. At Newington High School, there are 100.8 FTE for teachers, 9.5 administrators, 4.25 classified, 25 ASME employees. The hourly allotment is there for tutors and other support staff, for a grand total of 139.55 FTE at Newington High School. They were off by 31 students as far as enrollment goes. And the at-risk at Newington High School, I don't know why it does this, 40 students. The Transition Academy is, we have one FTE for teacher, .25 classified, .20 ASME. The hourly is figured into the centralized budget, so it is in charge to the Transition Academy. But we do have the job coaches and tutors and so on. But it is in charge to this program. It's charged to the central. So there's the cost. There's the FTE, 1.45 FTE. There are 15 students there currently, and 100% of them are considered at-risk. The need, 120%, obviously. So now, what we do with everybody else is, and this is where I think some people will get confused. So this is the centralized, or the district-wide staffing. So there are obviously needs that have to be performed, that can't necessarily be charged off to a school. Substitute teachers, for instance. It's very difficult to determine who is going to be out and need a substitute that far in advance. So all of the substitute teacher goes into the centralized fund. So that's considered, you know, central. And so that number is there for substitutes, any contractual stipends that are negotiated with the NTA, any homebound that has to occur, and then any curriculum writing tasks that have to happen. All of that is centralized, and that's the dollar amount for that. For administrators, now, these are centralized administration, and many of which are, whom are assigned to other buildings and programs. Nine is the total there. We have 20 classified staff, and that includes people who are assigned to multiple programs in multiple buildings. 40.8 ASME. It really isn't fair to charge some of the clerical and the bus drivers to schools, since they do many schools. So that is all put into central budget. And then, non-union drivers, part-time maintenance, custodial, security, and all of that is charged toward central. So there's your total there. We have 69.8 FTE in that area, in the centralized area. So this I put more for, because this will go up on the web. It's a little hard to see now. But that breaks down by school, because I know that has been a question before. Can you tell me how many teachers? Can you tell me how many administrators? Can you tell me how many classified staff? So this breaks down exactly how many people we have at each school and how much we're paying for each one of those in each school. So you can get an idea, just in staffing, of the amount of money we're spending for each one of those categories by school and by district and so on. So all of that is there for anybody to see. That's just really our visual learners, a breakdown of who we have and how our staff So the change, so year over year. So how has this changed and in what category? If we take teachers, and this is where I wanted to take just a little bit of time to make sure I explained this. First of all, the two STEM teachers for these high school STEM academies are included in this amount. So I wanted to be clear about that. So you'll see the number, the FTE number does go up by two, from 3.44, which is, you know, on the right, current, you know, and then where we are over here on the left. So it goes up by that amount. And now, the only reason it goes up by 5.93% is it's directly related to the reserve fund that we had to use and the amount of money that had to be used from that. So it could be misleading. So otherwise, they're not getting a 5.93% increase. I just wanted to be clear about that. The department coordinators, we put in for, it looks like 2.4%. Administrators, we put in for 1.04. Classified staff, .8. ASME, and that is a negotiated rate of 2.5. Tutors, 2%. And other support staff, 1.6. So the grand total of the increase of the dollars needed is 1.9, which does include the use of the non-lapse fund that has needed to be filled in. So our salary obligations, new money, if you will, 1.168, or 1.66%. This does not include the positions funded through the contingency account. If we did not fill those, we would need to cut those. It was approximately 14 positions last year that were put in one year, so we would have to cut those. And I didn't see that as a responsible option, so you will see that in my budget. Employee benefits, this is where I wish I could have presented a week from now, because I'm hoping that this number will not be there. Last year, our benefit number actually went down. And I was hoping to get to that point and wait as long as I possibly could, so that I could bring a different number to you. Unfortunately, this is the number that we're required to use right now from the agent of record. It's 5.1280, or .73. I'm very confident this will go down. I don't know by how much. We will know by February 1st. Special education, as I think I shared with you, we had, our special ed population has risen, has come with different needs, and there were six students who came to us from different communities at the end of last year who required services. If you remember, we were short. We started the year at a $450,000 deficit. We were able to use the contingency fund to bridge that gap, if you will. But that money, as I've already shared with you, is no longer there, but the kids are. So we have to kind of fill in that hole. That is not something that is even negotiable. It's something I have to provide for those kiddos. Other legal obligations, this is the mandate that some of us are familiar with. That was passed, and we are required to provide a, I'm not going to say full day, but we are required to provide what is considered a similar program for our expelled students. That includes a therapeutic element, includes a counseling element, includes all of those things that needs to be provided. We are able to take advantage of a program that Krec does have for us if we wanted to use it. It's $365 a day, and it would cost us about $400,000. We believe that we can do it in-house. I don't want to say cheaper, because I want to make sure I'm clear that we'd be putting together a great program. But I think we can do it for less money than that. So I think we can do it for $150,000. We have the elements of the program that are together. We're just missing a space right now, because they can't be in a school building. They have to be in a different facility. So I need to find another facility where I can put them, and I think we can bring the costs in at about $150,000. Unfortunately, it does need to be added to our budget, because we don't have it in the But one of those numbers needs to be included. So we either have to include the 150 or the 400 in the budget. So here's our total, if you will, contractual and legal obligations that we must fund. The salary, the benefits, special education, and the expulsion mandate is our contractual and legal obligations. It does not include the deferred positions at this point. What I tried to do is, if there were a few other areas that were unavoidable that went up, so for any area that I saw went up, we had to find a corresponding area to decrease to make it match, because I didn't want anything else to go up. So we had, insurance went up by $22,000. Contracted services for the Board of Ed, like, it could go up $7,000, that's typically as for the SRO. A plant costs $9,700. So that totals $38,000 of other areas that would increase. So we looked for areas where we could decrease to find the exact amount. Looks like we got down to the last $20 and charged media for it. All right? Now, for Now, fortunately, you know, we've been able to use health benefits funding, because I don't want anybody to think we're going out without social studies things, you know. We were able to purchase some of these things using health benefits money, so some of those things could be reduced. So I don't want you to think that we're taking everything out of the academic programs to fund some of the other things. We are able to make sure, that is our first priority, that they get what they need. They're not getting everything, but we do our best. So now I've included the other things that I think are important and necessary and have been identified as needs that we add to that. The deferred layoffs that we used, the money from the contingency fund totaled $617,045. That I put back in to move those people forward. The high school STEM academies, I put those back in. And then preschool class, as I think I shared with you, the numbers that we started the year with were alarming to me, because I know it only goes up, it never goes down. As students turn three, that's when we start to get them. So as they turn, start to turn three, the number goes up, it's up to 69 now. And so this is not the plan's proposal to expand preschool. This is adding another special education classroom, preschool classroom. This is not something I can do without, I have to have this. So if it doesn't, if it doesn't get funded here, I have to take it out of somewhere else, out of another academic program, because I have to have this for the preschool program. Technology, last year we cut more than half of the budget. I did not add any additional funding to the budget. So if the shortage can't be covered through health benefits, we're just going to have to go without. Remember, we haven't replaced the desktop computers, which we still need, by the way, in our computer labs, and our secretaries need them and so on. So we haven't replaced those in a while, and they're going to need to be done at some Maintenance, this is an area that is, it really, really concerns me. This chart is nothing more than kind of a how-to, how should you be funding things? And so the formula that is used is you typically take your replacement cost of the building and your maintenance operation, a certain percentage of that. So this kind of tells me what area, what ballpark I should be spending to maintain the facilities, and obviously, it's not. Our maintenance budget in 2015-16 was 4.3 million. We then, in 16-17, cut almost a million from that. And then last year, we cut $2 million from it, leaving only $1.3 million to manage 800,000 square feet of space, of buildings that are over 50 years old. We have been relying, again, on the health benefit fund to do that at the end of the year, if at all possible, but there's only so much that that fund can do, there's only a certain amount of money. So being $2 million short, again, really worries me, so I put $700,000 into the budget to put back some of the things, so we can start repairing some things. And just to give you an idea of where that money came from, this was their budget. So the repair budget in 16-17 was 1.7. And this year, we appropriated $472,000 for that cut, as you see over on the right. Contracted services, we cut $510,000. Maintenance supplies, we cut 218, and then no equipment, floor scrubbers, things like that, that was all cut out. So cutting that amount of money really kind of worried me a little bit, so I put 700 back into that, which is still only about a third of what we need. Here's how it breaks down, so what are we going to spend the money on, and what do we hope to spend the money on? Supervisor's recommendation is up there, and by school, and so they've identified what the Priority One, Priority One-A, and Priority Two needs are by building. So you'll see it there. And by putting the 700,000 back in, I was able to achieve most of the Priority One maintenance issues by building. I was not able to achieve the Priority One-A or the Priority Two. There are no buses included in the budget. I did not include any buses. I know it's a tight year, and I realize that, that, you know, we've all got to tighten our belts and everything, and so we didn't put anything in there. The replacement program does call for six a year to be replaced, we're on a 10-year cycle. And I would recommend that if there was any money, I don't know where CIP stands, but if there was any money in CIP, I would recommend that you, that they start saving or put it toward a facility, a garage, if you will, somewhere, so that the buses could be stored inside, because we save a lot of money by keeping the buses inside. You'll save over $200,000 a year, every year, if you're able to somehow secure a facility. So I'd recommend, rather than buying buses, that you, if there was any money, to save it toward, toward that new facility, if at all possible. And we were able to keep the operating expenses the same, so they did not increase this year, they're the same as they were last year. The plans proposals, unfortunately, there weren't many of them this year, but they were all outstanding. I think I've shared with you the number of EL students that has gone up dramatically, dramatically. And like I said, these were all very good proposals. I wasn't able to include any of those in the budget without making the number just so, so big, it was unpalatable. There they are. And again, this will all be on the website in the morning. The status of the plans proposals over the past few years. 15-16, we did move, were able to move two of them forward, there were part-time security officers, and then board-certified behavior analysts. 16-17, there's only two of them, but one was really big, and that was the eighth-grade Spanish program. And then this year, we moved, well, it was grant-funded, so it was kind of a no-brainer, but the marketing course at New Wington High School was able to move forward, and it didn't cost you anything, but still, it was a proposal and it did move forward. So the major factors that I have, that are, I see as priorities, obviously, the salary funds has to be funded, the benefits is something that we really have no control over at this point. The preschool classroom, as I shared with you, I have to have this, if, just because of the sheer numbers. And that number is not just, that number includes tutors, not just the teachers. So it's teacher and tutor, so I don't want you to think that's just what the teacher would be. The high school STEM academy teachers, I put in there. Maintenance, I put in only a fraction of what I think we need there, but I think that, you know, we can get by with that as long as there's some health benefits money available to us, or the public school CIP money or whatever. And then the expulsion mandate, we really don't have an option, we've got, we're out of compliance, and we've got to, we've got to do that, and this is the least expensive way that I can find to do it. So my request in new money would be 3.96%. To that, I have to add the recurring salary that was funded through contingency this year, which brings it up to 4.84. And then the recurring special education costs that were funded through the contingency of $450,000, so that brings it up to 5.48. So my actual request that is in your book is 5.48%. And this is how it flushes out. If you look over to my request, and under property equipment number 700, you'll see what we were spending in 16-17, that's all property. We reduced it drastically this year to $245,000, and I took that, even that, out this year, so there are no snow blowers, or there's no computer, no equipment whatsoever at all in there. Here's the, if you want to call it a grand total, that is in the budget book. Percentage of new money is 3.96, and then the, with the impact of the contingency to fund the recurring expenses. The timeline, obviously, the board will review it. It will go to, has to go to the council no later, or the town manager no later than March 2nd. That's the drop-dead date. Here's kind of the timeline. So the board will review over the next few weeks. I'll turn it over to the town manager, who will then submit her budget to the town council for a final decision on appropriation. These are the important dates, right here. Again, this will be on the website, so no point in going over them now. If anybody is interested in seeing the financial audits, some of the other accounts that are in the count, you will find all of that information with regard to the cafeteria program, the scholarship program, all of those things are in the town's comprehensive audit, okay? And then, of course, we're audited state and federally every year as well. Those are some of the things that you will find in what is called the CAFER, and they're all available on the town website. Some source information, I'm not going to go over this, but I wanted to have a place that will be on the website, where you can get all of the backup, if you will, to this. So when I speak about a law, or a mandate, or something like that, you have a place where you can go that is clickable, so you can actually see the source. So the board has kind of responsibilities, you have to uphold the Connecticut Constitution, follow the law, and then obviously focus on our mission. There's the school choice legislation, all of that is clickable. The state constitution. The titles and chapters of all of those things that I mentioned. The responsibilities of Board of Education, responsibilities of local municipalities, all of that is there. The interests of the state that are defined. And that, that's where they include that mandate language. The, here again, duties of responsibilities of the Board of Education. And these are all of the things that are broken down. So we talk about, the first one, for instance, talks about school buses. And so, what is a school bus, and what is the definition of a school bus? So all of that is there, all the federal requirements, and all of that are there. IDEA, Section 504 is all defined, and what those requirements are. The board's responsibility to make sure you provide books and textbooks, computers, and all of that kind of thing. The maintaining of the building or the equitable allocation of resources, the town of New Wington has taken responsibility for funding capital projects, which is great, we have a, I think, a really phenomenal system of making sure that the capital needs are met in town. The accountability for those facilities is, however, on the board, so you just need to understand that, that part of the law there, the proper maintenance of the facilities. IDEA, that explains IDEA. The question is, how do we get from where we are and some of the things that we're required to do by law to kind of closing that gap? And I will have tomorrow, I'm going to put it in a different format, but some of the things over the past, I want to say eight years, eight, nine years, of some of the things that have been reduced from the budget, to give you some perspective of some of the things that we've already cut out from the school district. All right, questions?
Thank you, Dr. Collins, for your presentation. We'll open it up to board questions for Dr. Collins. My only request to the board is that they be more discreet questions about the actual presentation, as we do have two meetings next week to get into more of the details of the actual budget numbers, and then a series of three or four meetings as a board body to ask more questions about decision-making, backup data, things like that. So if there are any discreet questions about the actual presentation, I'd entertain, and Mr. Sylvie, I did see your hand in the middle of the presentation, and I appreciate you allowing Dr. Collins to finish, but if you have something.
I do thank you.
If you can just put your mic on.
I do, thank you. During the presentation, there was a category called "at-risk." Eventually, though, when I got to about the eighth slide, my calculations told me what the number was generating and what that column meant, so, thank you.
Very good, thank you. Do any other board members have any questions right now about the actual presentation? Okay. Seeing none, again, I will remind the board members and the public, our next meeting about the budget is Tuesday, January 30th, at 6:00 PM here. It's the first of two nights dedicated to going through our budget binder, program area by program area, to talk to our administrators about every last detail and every line item that is present in our budget. And then the 31st is a 7:00 PM Wednesday meeting. Those are two great meetings for all of us to try to digest all of this. For Ms. Dros and Mr. Branda, who's away in business right now, it is very, sometimes difficult to get through the budget book the first time around, so please feel free to contact any of us or Dr. Collins in his office with questions about why things look the way they do in the budget book, and we're more than happy to answer any of those questions. And we will ask endless questions on Tuesday and Wednesday, we have hours and hours of time to do so. And then after that, in the next Wednesdays, the 7th, 14th, and 21st, we will have time as a board to discuss what we feel is appropriate in terms of altering the budget, making it our own, asking more follow-up questions, asking for research from our administration into why they've requested what they've requested, and we can make any changes we like before we turn it over to the town manager and the town council. So we will have ample opportunity to discuss everything, and I encourage everyone to think out your questions beforehand. If you have the opportunity, send any of them along beforehand to Dr. Collins, so he and his staff can answer some of them in real time at our meetings. Because, of course, if we ask complicated questions at a meeting, it will take them some time to get us a detailed response, which we obviously deserve. So in the meantime, again, Dr. Collins, thank you for your work in putting this together, and your staff, and all of our teachers who had input. We will have much more discussion on the budget as we go along. We will now move on to new business item two, which is an action item for textbooks approval. This is something that we discussed at our last meeting, and I would ask if anyone has their agenda open to make the motion, so that we can then enter discussion on it. Mr. Vassell? Why don't we give it a minute and thank you to the administrators and town councillors who are here and for the presentation, and we'll be in touch soon. Very good.
Move the Board of Education to approve the following novels, Taste of Salt, Modern Story of Haiti, Behind the Mountains, The Long Walk to Water, I Am Alala, How On Girls Stood Up, Our Education and Change, and A Young People's History of the United States.
Sir, a second? Seconded by Mrs. Guyon. I'll start the discussion. This was discussed at our December 13th meeting, the books were available for us then and throughout the last month and a half in the superintendent's office. Mrs. Rocka does have them here tonight. Does anyone have any questions about the books or their usage or anything like that before we vote? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously, thank you. We also, we now move on to new business, action item number three, possible demolition of bus garage. I'll ask if someone can read the motion. Mrs. Guyon?
Move the New Wington Board of Education authorize the town demolish the bus garage if necessary due to the cleanup of the site. The Board of Education is not giving up the property to the town, and the condition must be suitable to park buses there again until another, more permanent solution is found.
In a second? Seconded by Mrs. Guyon. Seconded by Dr. Braverman. It's my understanding there's a facilities committee meeting last night to discuss this issue. This is related to the environmental issue that's going on on Garfield Street and the bus garage. This is one thing that we need to do right now to give the town flexibility. This is also a good time to mention that we all did get an email that there's a joint meeting tomorrow night for anyone who can attend at 5:30 with the town council to discuss further these issues, and make sure that everyone has the same information, because many people have different parts of the information, and the public hasn't heard the whole story yet necessarily. So tomorrow night's a good opportunity for all of us to discuss this in much greater detail. And I'd ask Mr. Giacomo, it's maybe to talk a little bit more about this motion.
Okay. Thank you. The circumstances at this time necessitate us to consider the demolition of the bus garage because of the general soil conditions in the area. The nature of the clay base that's there with the old filth dating back 50 years ago has led the consultants to recommend to us that it's probable that it'll be more efficient, and definitely more cost-effective, to raise the building and start over again. So, there's no real problem with the building structure itself, other than the practicalities of what we're faced with at this time.
Can you discuss also the technical nature of the motion, that we're authorizing the town to do the demolition?
Yes, correct. As the Board of Ed, any properties that are under your jurisdiction and control will remain under your jurisdiction and control until you have taken formal action to return them to the town. This is typically when we have no longer, no longer have use for any building or property that the board has been managing. For example, if the district had a significant decline in enrollment, and there was the opportunity to close one school because the enrollment didn't justify keeping it open, you know, the board could take action at that point, and basically cede that property back to the town, saying, "We no longer need this, we now give it back to you." So this is in exactly the same vein. The only difference here is we are not relinquishing the rights to use the property for the intended purpose. I mean, we do have operational needs for the bus depot and bus garage operations that need to be restored, if it's not to this location, somewhere else. Certainly, taking the opportunity right now to determine what is the best course of action is, you know, really important, given, you know, the circumstances here, and the impending town hall renovation, reconstruction project.
Okay. Dr. Collins, is there anything you'd like to add?
No, no, I think Lou said it best. It's a matter of, this is something that the town may need, and it would require board action, so we wanted to make sure that we didn't delay them, or what they needed to do. So this, that's why, by voting tonight to authorize the town to do that, they have the go-ahead, if you will, to do what they need to do.
And so, I know this is a big issue that is taking up a lot of people's times to answer community questions. Our agenda item tonight is specific to the demolition of the bus garage, and because we are having a joint meeting tomorrow evening with the town council, it's, I think it's more appropriate to discuss everything about the contamination, the spill, all of that, with the town council, so everyone has the same knowledge going into things. So are there any other questions about the actual motion on the table? Mr. Sylvia?
It's our bus garage, correct?
That is correct, yes.
It was our fuel tank, correct?
That's a matter for interpretation. But my understanding is that both the town and the Board of Ed used that area to fill up.
But the town has taken the lead to address the environmental situation?
At this point, what's been going on is the Board of Ed and the town have been working collaboratively to deal with the issues, to be in touch with the insurance company, and to do everything that's necessary right now to prevent more damage. So, you know, that's what's happening, and I think tomorrow night is probably a better opportunity to ask some more of those deeper questions, when we have the town council and town manager available for questions.
I thank you. My hesitation is I don't have enough information to be able to make a sound decision. I would move to table this until the joint session, understanding that such permission may have to be granted, but I don't have sufficient information just to say, "Okay, town, go."
That raises a good point. Is there any immediate plan for the demolition of the bus garage?
I don't know. It, I know what they had said the other day was, it was a very good possibility that it would, you know, it would definitely be more cost-effective to take the facility down. And if you recall, this is the same facility that the buses no longer fit in, so it's three feet too short. Not that that has anything to do with it, but, so, no definite plans right now, but we wanted to be able to grant the authorization to the town, should they need to take that action.
Was this request from the town manager and town council for us to take this action?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Oh, the request originated from the-
They requested we take this action, is what Dr. Collins is saying, so that they have the flexibility to do what any of the experts that are involved deem necessary.
All right, I appreciate that explanation.
We don't want to hold them up in any way.
I don't have any move to table it anymore. Thank you.
Okay. Does anyone have any other questions about the motion? Mr. Tufel? Please put your mic on.
As far as the bus garage itself, the one that they're talking about, isn't that part of the whole town hall project being removed eventually down the road?
I don't believe that's in the town reno project that was passed.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions before a vote? Dr. Braverman?
There were steam shovels, for lack of a better term, when I was coming to the meeting tonight, so they're doing emergency remediation or something right now.
Yeah, we'll talk about that again tomorrow night, but it's contained, there's no, there's no need to worry, as far as, you know, the consumers or publicist concerns.
Right, so there are, obviously, whenever something like this happens, there's a ton of moving parts. Some people have some information, some have others, so I do think tomorrow, you know, will be a chance for all of us in a public meeting at the end of the joint session to be able to talk about all of these issues, not just the bus garage. Mr. Sylvia?
Will it be discussed at the public meeting, or within the executive session of the meeting that was published?
The agenda that I saw today says that there's a public, there's a public portion of the meeting concerning environmental issues.
That was for the, that was for the strategic underwriting and paying cost of it. There's also an executive session-
I think it's broader than that. And I see some town councillors nodding their head yes, that there will be public time for discussion about the actual issues themselves, and how we're going to be dealing with them, and what's been going on.
So that'll be discussed in public, not executive session?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
It's public on the agenda. Is there any further questions on this motion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously, thank you. We will now move on to item G on our agenda, which is the superintendent of schools' report. Dr. Collins, in case you want to talk anymore tonight.
All right. Well, I think I've shared most of what I had to say with you. Again, the enrollment numbers are there, and if you take a look at, I'm going to draw your attention now to the preschool numbers, as I shared with you, concern me. We're up to 69 students. It's not uncommon, this, this number we know grows, because as the students turn three, they come to us. So, we started off at a very high number. So that's on the enrollment. The magnet school enrollment is, as expected, going down. We're down, as I shared with you, 171, so it says 178 there, but that was in January. The others, you can read for yourself, I certainly don't want to take up any more of your time. There are still things, wonderful things going on in the district. Transition kids are doing, doing wonderful things, as usual. And that's essentially it.
Does anyone have any questions about what was in the superintendent's report to us in the packet? Mr. Sylvia?
Thank you. Yes, our last meeting, we, I asked if we could have a further elaboration on the whole, and where it was allocated. I don't see that on this monthly report, or any kind of updates to that last request.
That's a good point. We had, we had requested that. I don't think it was on the superintendent's report, but it was on the mid-year transfers that we had done, asking to see what the, what the real numbers look like with the money from the non-lapsing fund.
Yeah, that was in my presentation tonight.
That I did notice.
Okay, yeah.
So I think that's what we had requested. Are you, are you saying for the budget report that they run, because it adds up to the 70.389, you want to see what it is with the non-lapsing money?
And so, the budget presentation, or the presentation is in our npsc.org site?
It will be on our website first thing in the morning, and I will put it in the team drive for you.
Thank you. All right.
And let me know if there's something else that you're looking for, and I can, I can try to get that.
No, it's just access to the data.
Okay, great. Any other questions for Dr. Collins on his report?
Matter of fact, I think I emailed the PDF to everybody. You should have it already, yeah.
Okay. Seeing no other questions for Dr. Collins, we'll move on to item H of our agenda, which is public participation on any matter related to board responsibilities. Our phones are open again at 860-665-8736. I know, I thought I saw the light flashing during the presentation, so I will wait a little bit longer this time to see if anyone wants to call back in. I think this is what they call bad radio. Well, if someone does call in, and you're just tuning in, we'll take your call, as long as the meeting hasn't adjourned yet. Again, 860-665-8736. And please feel free to email any questions if you wanted to ask something tonight and didn't get through. With that, we'll move on to remarks by board members. We'll start with Dr. Braverman.
Okay. Very nice presentation. I missed the honking horn, but everything else was great.
I didn't want to include-
That was good. January 18th, we had about 25 Newington families come to a basketball game at Central. It was very nice. We won very tight, and they got, one of the students got to do the free throw in the middle, and got it in, got a T-shirt, so that worked out very well. There are 10 students taking classes at Central that are enrolled for the spring semester. Two of those 10 are taking two classes each, so I'm very happy about that. I'm going to try to arrange a visit and make sure they're having a good time.
That's fantastic. And for anyone who doesn't know, that's listening at home, since it's a budget meeting, that's a program that Dr. Braverman worked for years on, that was finally, got through at Central two years ago now, right? Where students at Newington High School are able to take classes at Central tuition-free and earn college credit. It's really amazing, and I don't want to lose sight of the fact of what you did for our students, which is fantastic.
Thank you.
So 10 students this semester, that's great.
Yeah, it's my pleasure.
Do you have anything else?
Nope, that's, I'm done.
Mr. Vassella?
I'm good.
Thank you. Mr. Sylvia?
Thank you very much. I'd like to share with you, Josh, that I compiled all of the CAFR budget requests that were noted in your presentation, and I have them by year, that tracked all of the original requests that were in the CFR, and also the actual expenditures on a year-by-year basis. It has some normal trends, and thank you, I was able to incorporate this year's budget presentation. I do want to thank the staff, and for your time and efforts, and Dr. Collins, for your efforts to put this budget together. I do understand the level of effort that's needed, and I do appreciate it. But I'd be happy, Josh, I'll share it with you, and Dr. Collins, of what I've compiled, it reflects, is dynamically linked currently to the CFR that's on the town website. But I would like to share it, so that you can distribute it to all members for their In addition, I had the opportunity to attend my first PTA/PTO meeting this year at John Wallace, and I had to, I must say publicly, I was impressed with their effort, energy, and the amount of success that they've had. So, I'm looking forward to all the other meetings that are scheduled for this coming school year. And, Dr. Braverman, congratulations on the success with the students. That's excellent to hear. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sylvia. Mr. Tufel?
I'd like to congratulate Dr. Braverman on the success of her program that she initiated, and also, thank you for the presentation this evening, and see y'all at the next meeting. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Ms. Dros? Also, Mrs. Guyon?
I just want to say thank you for that. I appreciated seeing it presented in a different way. I think that actually made a lot more sense to me, so that cleared up a lot of questions right off the bat for things that, I mean, even though I've done this a couple of times, it's still a lot to get through, so I thought that that was really helpful. So I appreciate that, and I know that it's not easy to change things, and I appreciate your being flexible in doing that for us. So, that's it. Looking forward to the conversations in the next couple of weeks.
Thank you, Mrs. Guyon. I have a few comments, the first of which builds off of what you said. One of the things that Dr. Collins and I have talked about a lot in the last few months is ways to provide information in a different way. Sometimes when we go program by program, you kind of get jumbled into, kind of segregating into programs, rather than looking at what it actually costs to educate students. One way to look at it is by building, where you're breaking it down by the number of different types of staff that are actually doing the educating of our students. So, that's one thing. We've also talked about some additional things, which I think will be coming to us sometime in the next week, for additional ways that we can break down, ways that we look at things, to try to increase the amount of transparency for the community, to let them know that there is a rationale for why we have the amount of salary we have, which you can, you can see when you go through building by building, the amount of teachers, the salary for them, the amount of classified staff, the salary for them. And that builds into these program areas, but it's sometimes difficult to see the way that we look at the budget line by line. So that's one thing I do want to point out, and thank Dr. Collins every time for the last six and a half years with me, when I've asked for more information to go into the public, he has done so. The budget, again, this year will be updated, put online. His presentation will be online for the public in the morning. Our budget book itself will be online for the public. If it's not now, it will be in the morning as well. That way, people can follow along with us. This has only been happening for a couple of years, and never happened before that. So I think it's important to recognize the strides we are making, to make sure everyone has the same information in the community that we do. I will say again, that as you go through budget books, if you have questions that are confusing you, please reach out sooner rather than later. The meetings run much more smoothly when everyone knows what your question's going to be, and they already have an answer for you that they can give in public, and that is really just a benefit for everyone's sake. I am, I am open for phone calls, and I try to respond as best I can the same day if I can't get to it right then. Please feel free to do so if you have questions as you're going through the budget book. The last thing I will say is that the meeting tomorrow night with the town council, obviously, we have very short notice about it. It is their, it was their request to have a joint meeting with us, so we have obviously agreed to do that. Anytime we can get together is a good thing. Please, if you're able to get there for 5:30 tomorrow, it's downstairs, not in this room, it's in L-101, please do so. Obviously, we'll be getting a lot of information, and if you're unable to attend the meeting, we'll try to fill you in as best as possible afterwards. This is, you know, everything involving the environmental spill by the bus garage is complicated. There's many moving parts. This is potentially a multi-year issue, so, you know, this is something we are in the very beginning stages of, so gathering information is incredibly important. So, I have not seen the phone ringing, I apologize to anyone if you did try to call earlier. Please send an email out through our website, and we'll try to get back to you quickly. With that, I will wish everyone good luck this weekend reading through your budget books, and I will see all of you, hopefully, tomorrow night, and after that, Tuesday at 6:00 PM here, for the first of two somewhat-long nights to go over line by line the budget. And yes, Mrs. Dros, the amount of time we spend here depends on how many questions we ask, and we'll see if anyone can beat my first-year record of what had to be 675 questions.
What we thought about doing, which may be helpful, to get them out to you sooner, is we thought about putting a Google Doc together, so you can, you all have access to the drive, actually, so you can put them in there, and then hopefully, we can answer them as we go along, so-
For questions, you mean?
Yeah. So if you type the question in, we can hopefully get an answer to you, so when you come to the meeting, you have the answer already. If that's, okay, you know, we'll try it, see what happens.
And then, what we will, we will try very hard to do is that, at our public meeting, we will talk about those questions, if they are relevant to the public's information, just so everyone has the same information that we do. Mr. Sylvia?
Apologize for my hearing. So it's like the classroom setup to, for us to submit the questions?
Yeah, it'd be, it'd be a Google Doc so that anyone can type in, so that there'd be kind of a questions about the budget. We could type in, in cat, you know, category, you know, in art program 111, what is this dollar amount stand for? And then either the administrators can answer those questions as we put them up or can provide answers to us at the meeting so they'll be aware of them. Obviously, email works just as well.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone have anything else before we, we'll go back to Mr. Tufel?
The Magna School enrollment at 191 and the present number is 171. Calls for double salary payment, one for Magna School, one for us?
That's correct. So we're, we are paying for them to be here?
For paying double for a student. I think that should be explained.
Yeah.
Because we pay their, we pay for the Magna School and then we also, and when they return, we've got to pay to educate them here in town.
So far, 30 have come back.
But I think this has to be explained to the public also.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll certainly talk about it as we go through that part of our budget on, on Tuesday or Wednesday. Anything I want to give everyone opportunity? Anyone? Second time around? Okay. I will call for a motion to adjourn by Mr. Vasella. And now I will ask for a second by Mrs. Dros. And we are adjourned at 8:32. Thank you, everyone.